Not at race.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Not bad. Sort of veterans. Yes.
He's no longer my problem.
You don't have any.
No, I had one.
Thanks.
Thank you.
How's physical care?
I have one more session.
You know, it actually may be.
Good. I have to remember it tomorrow.
Okay, next.
It's that's where you go. This one.
He's working in. I dropped it.
Your eyes off.
Shattered. One of those.
That's kind of.
Shattered. Just the floor.
That's sharp.
Yeah, I said. Yeah. So.
There you go. There you go.
Good evening. Welcome to our October twenty-second meeting. If you will stand, join me with the pledge and a short prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, as we gather this evening, we ask that you guide and protect us, all of us in everything that we do. We ask that you grant us wisdom, calmness, and peace, that we may conduct ourselves in a manner that is pleasing to you. And all these things we ask in your name. Amen. Have the commissioners had an opportunity to review the minutes of previous meeting? And if so, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Have the commissioners had an opportunity to review the claims? And if so, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Have the commissioners had an opportunity to review the payroll? And if so, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Uh, next up, we have the I D M Keystone Cooperative is the form us that the final decision has been issued for their permit application. This is for information only. We also have the clerk's monthly report. Do I have a motion on it?
Move to accept.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded. Accept. Report of the clerk. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. We also have monthly, we need some measures report. Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. We also have the monthly I T report for September. Do I have a motion?
Move to accept.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries three zero. Next up, we have food and beverage claim for the Memorial Park Ponds affidavit number twenty sixteen dash one oh two for seal coding for twenty-seven thousand five hundred seventy-seven dollars and fifty cents deposit. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Next up, Mr. Murphy.
Good evening, commissioners. Two items for you. The first is related to the county website. And I'm asking your permission to work with Jeff to put two links on the county website. One for the Henry County Redevelopment Commission and the other for the Henry County Tourism Commission. On the economic development webpage, we have created basically a landing page for each of those entities. That includes our YouTube, our respective YouTube feed, and then also our, uh, our, our meeting information. And since both of those entities are a division of county government. I want a link from your website. It just simply says Henry County Redevelopment Commission. You click on it and it goes to that landing page. And it lists the members of the Redevelopment Commission, a general description of what they do, and then it has meeting information. And the same for the Tourism Commission.
Approved.
I was like, where'd Jeff go?
Yes, he's saying.
Are you okay?
He's okay.
Yeah, sounds good.
You're, you're okay. Everybody's okay.
Well, I wouldn't go quite that far.
Okay, alright.
I'm satisfactory. I wouldn't say I was okay.
Thank you. Uh, the other item is related to the resolution. Uh, resolution twenty twenty-five dash ten dash twenty-two parentheses thirteen. It's a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners regarding approval of creation of the Acheson Lot Number Four allocation area. By way of reminder, this is the final step of the R D C Plan Amendment. Um, in response to the N E O project. And so it carves out Lot Four into its own allocation area. And the plan also includes language that gives the Redevelopment Commission the opportunity, uh, to provide some financing. But that has its own approval process that, uh, is decided by the county council. But we couldn't even go, uh, we couldn't ask the county council unless it's in our plan. And so we're running kind of two parallel tracks here, but this is the final step on the Plan Amendment. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
And I'll second.
Motion's been made in second to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash ten dash twenty-two zero one three. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
Thank you, commissioners.
Uh, next item on here for, uh, our H D P Plan. We're going to skip that. Josh is not here. Uh, we need to discuss this a little more with him. He will be at our next meeting to answer any questions, so we'll take that up at our next meeting. Next up. Angela, do you have something?
Good evening. Um, I emailed you a request for opioid funding in regard to the jail recovery assistance program. Uh, and I wanted to let you know that Representative Criswell brokered a conference call between Douglas Hunt Singer, who's the executive director of I C J I, myself, Cory, and Ms. Shelby Thomas, who's the Director of Public Affairs and Substance Use Policy. Shelby is overseeing the opioid money at this point in time. And part of the conversation that we had was getting clarity on restricted versus unrestricted funding, and they are putting together education for, um, D L G F. And that will trickle down to us. So we went through, um, all of the things that, uh, Debbie Walker had let me know that the feedback she had received. And, um, they were appreciative of us reaching out, um, because that a lot of the counties that still were, you know, confused about things. Um, and one of the biggest pieces of clarity is the administrative cost that is in the, um, unrestricted side, the, the smaller amount. And that has to do with managing the grant. So you all could hire someone as a contract person to manage the money and the reporting. And work with the auditor to get things paid, and it would take that burden off of the auditor. Um, so I just wanted to kind of put that out there. So with that said, I, um, discussed very pointedly with them our J R A P program. And, uh, both Douglas and Shelby, um, agreed that it totally fits the attachment A, I believe, which discusses the, um, the restricted side. We get tongue-tied here, restricted or restricted, the restricted side where we have more money. So being able to pay for salaries for clinicians absolutely falls into that. Um, so with that said, the proposal that I have, um, provided for you includes the J R A P Program Director at the current rate of pay that they are at. Um, I'm working with Stephanie. We still ended up, um, utilizing that position in the contract form as far as the job description. So we're going to get that shored up here very soon. Um, but I'm guessing that that'll be a S O or special occupation group because of what it entails. We're one of two J R A P programs that are still operating in the state of Indiana right now. Uh, so this is all looking, this is a one-year budget that I'm providing you. Um, would like to increase our community health worker and peer recovery coach, uh, to a full-time position. And then we would like to add a part-time licensed clinical social worker or mental health provider, um, to assist Jamie in the individual, um, counseling that those, the participants are getting. Um, and I wanted to, something happened last week. I've been working with a client that really drove home why this program is unique and so important. So I have a client, just a community client, uh, and they wanted to come off of Suboxone. So they called Recovery Works with, uh, that's on one and seventy and have other places, but locally went through the intake process. I sat with them as they went through the process. We get all the way to the end and the individual that's doing the intakes asked, well, where are you getting your Suboxone or do you have a dealer on the street? Well, no, I have a primary care physician and I'm being treated there. Oh, well, I'm sorry. We only take people who, i- if you're getting street drugs. If you're seeing by a doctor, you'll have to just take all of your guidance from there. This individual had never been through a formal, um, detox and recovery. Um, so you can imagine my frustration at that point. Head was on fire. And we ended up finding an alternative solution for this individual. And at every juncture that I tried to help this person. There was nothing in the way of a curriculum, a class, a you come here and we're going to give you these tools and these skill sets. It's go to the doctor, they're going to put you on Suboxone with no plan to get you off. And then they're going to put you with a licensed social worker, a clinical person to let you come and talk things out. And that is the extent of the care. So there are, our system's broken. I'll be the first one in the medical community to tell everybody that it's broken. So thinking and knowing that Henry County has a licensed mental health counselor who is providing this incredible education to these people. It's no wonder they're doing well when they get out of the program. So maybe one day we'll be able to take what we're doing inside the jail and make this opportunity outside the jail. So that we can work with our clients that are coming through drug court and really make an impact on their recovery. Do you have questions about this annual salary request?
So is the J R A P Director this year coming out of your health funds?
No, this is the program. This year we lost it, so I can no longer fund.
Where, where is it coming from right now? I'm just curious.
In twenty twenty-five, I apologize. Yes.
Okay.
H F I money.
Right, okay. And so for twenty twenty-six, you'd like it to come from opioid restricted? Okay. So my only thinking is just, I don't know off the top of my head how much, how many restricted dollars we get each year and what percentage of those dollars this would be? Do you know that?
I, I do not know.
Good.
That, and it, and I do have access to a spreadsheet that.
Yeah.
I have a link to it. And Shelby, um, what her name is. Yeah, Shelby explained that that kind of fluctuates from time to time, that you have to look at it.
Yeah. So I, I think these are, are good things. I just would want to make.
The money's there.
Right, right. Um, and then I know that Debbie was going through, I think most of what we had in restricted got pulled out anyways, so I'm not as worried about that. I just, I didn't know, is there anything else in the hopper that's competing for those dollars right now that you're aware of for?
I'm aware of on the restricted side. We've, we've taken them, the majority of things, right, Joel, out of the unrestricted? And that was the smaller pot, so we were quite concerned that that was going to dwindle a little bit.
Okay.
Faster than the other side.
Yeah. So Joe and Steve, do either of you know how much money is, how much money is there?
Off the top of my head.
Okay.
No.
If we didn't do this until the next meeting when we found out, would that make your?
I don't believe so.
It, it would be okay from a timing perspective? Okay. Cause that's all I would be curious about, but thanks for doing this. It sounds like a good thing, so, yeah.
And then the second item that I have, um, is in regard to our increasing homeless population. So, um, we've, since the first of September, we've received about eight different complaints. Um, about people living in tents, RVs, fifth wheels on property that they either own, don't own, and are there by permission. Um, I don't believe any of these are squat, true squatters to where we can move them off of the property. Um, so the calls are coming in rapidly, it appears. And where we're stuck in this conundrum is that if you look at, um, the nuisance ordinance that, um, comes out of the Planning Commission's office. There isn't anything on there that addresses tents, RVs, or fifth wheels. And so we have, we have a hole there. Um, secondly, as far as the Health Department is concerned, we do not have the authority by Indiana code to condemn a tent, an RV, or a fifth wheel. So these, these complaints, they will either start up in Tom's office and then come down to us, or they'll start in our office and kind of go up to Tom. So we're both offices are looking at them. From the heart, Health Department standpoint, well, we're going to go out and we're going to take the complaint. Um, and m- most of the time, when, when you look through the complaints, people are mad that people are there living in a tent or an RV. Some of them will say that I have a concern that they're putting excrement on top of the ground or dumping it in a, a local ditch or something like that. So when we go out, what we're focused on is where is that, um, excrement and that drainage going to places? Um, a lot of the complaints that we've had regarding RVs and fifth wheels, those individuals are using, they call them a blue boy, I guess, that colle, it's a collection tank. Um, and then they are able to tell us or show us where they, some, one gentleman was pulling his trailer to Love's and emptying it and then pulling the, the trailer back. Um, but a lot of them are using a septic company like Doodaw's, and they're coming out and they're, um, removing the stuff, emptying the tank for them and, uh, you know, getting potable water. There's a couple of situations in here, um, where we've got individuals who are on a property by permission, and then they are living in the RV and then going into the house to use the bathroom, shower, and cook and. So I'm, I'm not really, I got asked to bring this to you guys because it's just this volleying back and forth. So as a public health professional, my underlying concern is that we're, we're seeing an increase in homelessness in our community, and we're not alone. We're seeing it all across the United States. But I know that there had been a focus on these individuals really being in the city limits of Newcastle. And so the mayor and the, and city officials, so it really hadn't got to us at this point. But I think by moving a lot of those individuals out, we're seeing them take up residence, you know, in the county area. Um, we are working with them. We've got one, uh, individual who I think, uh, is a veteran. Uh, and there are some mental health issues there, and we're working, you know, as the best we can to get them connected to different things. Um, I know there's one particular property that the septic, um, system needs to repair. And we're working to find, um, solutions, monetary help with them from different avenues to get those individuals up to speed. But, um, I just wanted to put that out to you and see your thoughts. I know Susan.
I've sent a couple over and I didn't, because I'm new to this position, didn't realize that it was significantly different than before. Um, so that's interesting. Sad that it's increasing.
It's sad and.
Yeah.
It's a new issue, and I look for it to continue to increase as the economy and the political state of affairs continues to grow.
Um, yeah.
Have hungry people in November if they really don't fund food stamps come November the first.
Right.
So we're going to see these.
I'll say, cause I was involved with one of them. I think you were talking about that, uh, I got those calls and Commissioner's office gets them too, and then it goes to either one of your departments to figure out how we fix it. But I think a lot of it is a mental health issue, and we don't have any teeth in a nuisance order to invoke anything to make them, and if they're not breaking a law, there's really nothing that says they can't do some of these things on their own property. Uh, so we gotta be careful where we draw that line.
We do, we do.
Both of the calls I took, there was a question about sewage. Um, and so I'm glad to know that that's followed up on. And then I have the same questions too. I mean, the, if, if they're living there with the permission of the owner, then. But then I also, I do understand the neighbor's perspective. They don't want to. They don't want to see an entire homeless encampment out their backyard. And Tom had mentioned something about, you know, one camper was okay, but multiple were not. Is that correct according to the?
Yeah, and I didn't get it, an opportunity to ask that question, um, before then.
So the reason, reason I'm coming up is because I was set on the planning commission for four years and, and as a commissioner, we dealt with this. One camper you can have in your driveway, no problem, as long as you are proving to the Health Department that you are dumping your sewage appropriately, whether it's at Love's or Doodaw's or, or whoever. Two constitutes a campground. So I can't have two campers in my driveway because all of a sudden that becomes, according to our development code, becomes a campground. Anybody can pitch tent on their own property or if they have permission, but the copy, and it is not in the nuisance ordinance. Because in our development code, it says you can have a camper or an RV or whatever on your own property or with permission. But you do have to prove that you are dumping your sewage appropriately. And if that is not happening appropriate, then we dealt with one over in New Lisbon. Um, a neighbor didn't like that they had an RV in their, um, the, the other neighbor had an RV and somebody was living in it. But they, I believe Shady went out and it was proven that they were dumping, I mean, they, there was nothing legally, and I know Joel remembers this one too. There was nothing legally that we could do about it. But as long as they are dumping, but yes, if there's more than one RV, it's, it's considered a campground.
Can, can you repeat what you said about tents? If there's more than one tent or is it not?
No, I don't, I don't.
There's nothing about.
There's nothing.
Nothing about tents right now.
As, as far as I know, you would have to talk to, to Joel. This is the first that we've ever, I've ever heard of somebody doing tents.
Okay.
I don't know about tents, but RVs, it is a.
Right.
It is considered a campground if you have more than one.
Okay.
And hopefully, I mean, I know the weather has turned cold here recently, but we typically see individuals i- if they are tenting, um, tend to find something more structural, somewhere to be couch surfing or whatever during the colder months or, um, you know. Working with whoever to get them into a shelter or find something. Uh, it's just too cold in Indiana to do tenting all winter. So. I don't really need anything particular. I just wanted to follow up because there were so many cases and, um, talking to my environmental staff, they just wanted to kind of put that out there in, um, you know. Again, from the public health perspective, I hope that the public can show a little grace, you know, when, when it's appropriate, and I understand that, um, the frustration. But we are, we are following up. We will go out and make sure that there is no open dumping of, uh, any type of excrement or whatever. And we're working with one of the, um, septic companies to, um, possibly get them at least a portage on out there, port-alette. Um, in the event that we have such a situation, not that that would be a permanent solution to anything, but something where if they were just waiting for funds to go through or, you know, with the government shut, you know, whatever reason, that we can do a, a, a temporary fix. It's good for the environment that way.
What if you saw a lot of dumped trash that looked like it could attract rodents?
Now that is covered in the news.
Okay.
And then that would, Tom would be able to cite.
And we should, we should go through Tom for those complaints too, and he'll, or communicate with both of you then if we receive those, that's commissioning.
If it, anything that falls under that, trash.
Yeah.
That sort of thing, and it speaks of that.
Okay.
Rodents and.
Okay.
Lots of times it's kind of a dual role. If, sometimes if Tom's going out, we're going out anyway, just to make sure that we have a piece of it is all squared away.
Okay.
So.
Thank you, Angela.
Thank you.
Let's see, Brian. Braden. You don't have anything. Joe. Just rust. Okay. See Tom. If I'm sure it's a bird, man. You have anything?
I don't have anything.
Jenny. Ted. This is going to go quick. Brian. Just came here to enjoy the company, didn't you? I don't see anybody from EMS. Troy. Troy. Well, that takes care of that. I miss somebody. Under new business, apparently we have a 4-H Center application form that needs signatures by Joel and myself. Joel, do you know anything about that?
I think it's part of the reapplication by the Expo project for.
Over Grant. Have you had a chance to look at it?
I don't have any issue with.
All right. And then this Four Factor for Limited Community Block Development Grant Program, Civil Rights. Have you looked over this?
I have, yeah. I think it's something the grant administrator prepared. It's an analysis whether or not there's a significant number of non-English speakers that would be accessing the facility such that certain other steps would have to be taken.
You're okay with it?
Analysis seems fine to me.
Okay. Do we need to approve any of these, or?
I think we just need a motion for you and I to execute these documents.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made in second, giving authorization for Joel and I to sign these forms. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries three zero. I believe that is it.
I have one more thing for the commissioners. I received it. Information from a gentleman that works with Representative Shreve. And he was asking permission to come here Tuesday, next Tuesday, from 2:30 to 4:30. You've got that covered.
I believe we're looking at possibly letting, depending on what the construction is, the old coroner's office on the first floor.
Okay.
Possibly allowing them.
Just wanted to make sure that that was brought to everyone's attention.
That's it. Do I have anything from the public? Mr. Chu. Probably make it a little easier.
Okay, I have a question, questions and concerns. The bridge on 400 South over Flat Rock. I guess my concern is I'm hearing all kinds of different stories. I don't know what the true aspect of that is. I heard the other day, possibly 2031 for reopening. I have a real concern with that because we did all the work to the airport several years ago to make accommodations for the businesses to fly in their personnel. We also did last year, they paved that road from 103 to just a little portion past the airport to make it more accommodating for people to access from State Road 103. So I know it's something that was just created by the cracking of the bridge deck. I understand that. But to me, it's unacceptable to wait till 2031 to get that bridge back open. I drive a school bus on that road every day. I have to come out on 103. That's a very dangerous location in the first place, coming off of 400 South because of the traffic coming from the south. They don't adhere to that 45 mile per hour speed limit, and I've seen numerous accidents since I've been driving the bus. So if I have to come back on that road twice a day, to me, that's a danger factor that could be prevented. So I just have questions as to what, and I understand you can't just say, we're going to repair the bridge, and it gets repaired in X amount of days. It takes, I know, numerous months, sometimes a year to get that project completed because of the engineering report, the materials, and scheduling for the bridge to be constructed. So I just, I just want you to know, I'm concerned that what I've heard, I've heard all kinds of things. And I understand the county, you know, the finances of the thing, it's going to be pretty costly to replace that bridge. I understand that. And we can't just, you know, reach into the air and grab those funds that are needed for that.
Actually, we could.
But, I mean, I've done some investigating. I didn't do any detailed investigating. There's some federal options. I don't know what the details are to get those. And the state funding, I know we use the Community Crossings Grant and have done that numerous times, which is a real asset for the state and helps the counties and the municipalities out. So, but I just, it's just a real concern to me, and I know you guys, you ladies and gentlemen, have a lot of concerns, and I know, you know, it's not something that you can just repair at the drop of a hat. But I just wondered where we stood on that and what, if we can speed the process up possibly, so.
Definitely the topic.
I'm not the only one that is concerned. I've had numerous people ask me about it because they know I drive that road every day.
I get complaints about it almost daily, so.
And I spoke to you about it, I spoke to Susan about it. I spoke, I spoke to several people from the County Council about it too, and they're probably tired of hearing me, so. But I just, you know, from what I'm hearing, to me, it's not acceptable. 31 is not acceptable. I do understand it's going to take some time to do it, but 31, five years out, six years out.
Yeah.
We're not happy about it either. We're just trying to figure out what other options we have.
I know, I know this thing was created by something that's beyond your control. And I know there's also a liability concern. I think I expressed that to you, Steve. You said something about reopening the bridge with weight limitations. Well, I would have a concern with that, a liability concern with that. Because the guy that crosses it illegally, maybe the one that gets across it with the car behind it with two or three people, and if it doesn't weigh anything, maybe the one that pays the price.
Yes.
So I understand that. So we want to be as careful as we can in trying to do this, so. But I just, you know, the things that we've done on that road are a good thing. And for me to, I mean, for it to be shut down, I know it's beyond your control, but I just would like to see something, try to accomplish something, whatever we can do. So I know your hands are tied in that respect, so.
And we're trying, and I've had conversations with Joe and had a few with Braden about it, and we were looking at some other programs. And we're trying to expedite what we can. And we even talked to our state reps to see if there's other avenues that we can do. And Joe can probably address some of these because I reached out to him. There was a couple of programs that I had heard about.
So I'm going to address two things that the council is going to be looking at, and then Joe can follow up. So the council had a special meeting last week, I believe it was. Time gets away from me. It could have been the week before. On our max levy to petition DLGF, and that was approved to increase, which could potentially, if they approve it, we will get an additional $1.7 million tied to that petition. We had to have something specific tied to that. And the motion was made and passed unanimously that that 1.7 would go to bridges, culverts, small structures, and hopefully specifically to 400 South, which would be $1.7 million. Of course, we won't know if that is going to be accepted by DLGF for a little bit. Braden is going to be submitting to the council an additional appropriation for the engineering cost, so that we can at least get that going. And that will be heard at our November 12th. Is it the 12th, 11th, 12th, 12th meeting? So hopefully, it takes time to do the engineering, so there's no point in trying to do an additional appropriation for the entire amount of the money because we can't get it spent by the end of the year. But as long as we have the engineering under contract by the end of the year, we can do that. And Braden will be submitting that letter to Debbie tomorrow for the advertisement to go into the council. So hopefully, we are getting things, and the council is getting the finances in order that we can move quicker than doing it as a federal aid project, which I know nothing about, and I'll have Joe speak.
Federal aid applications are coming due in November. I plan on putting Bridge 115 on an application to submit to NDOT. The thing is, is that it's just, it just takes so much money. And if we go federal aid, it's still 2031 is the date, that's by state, NDOT. Now, if they come up with additional dollars before that time and we can move that, get the design done quicker, I don't expect it to be done quicker than a year, okay? But if we can do that, then if they have additional funds, we might be able to do 2030 instead of 31. Now, their fiscal year starts in 2030, July of 2030, for fiscal year 2031. So it could be let in July of 2030. All right, but when will the contractor begin? They usually give them till probably July or August of the following year, in case they don't want to run it through the winter. I have one, and right now, it's in the same predicament. But it's going to take, now, if we get local funding for the design, then I can put that on the application if I know for sure. And then that'll help us get approved through NDOT for federal aid. They like to see the locals pay for that design locally, and then they'll match it with the construction inspection and right away if we want it. Okay, right away shouldn't be that bad in that area. The cracks in the bridge, don't know what caused it for sure, but I have been asking SJCA or consultant to look into the idea of a overloaded trailer that we know that is in the county, I guess, too. And seeing if they can, what they call load rate the bridge for that particular vehicle, and see if it's okay. All right, so I haven't heard back yet. I don't know. Perry's, yeah, Perry's looking into it for us, so. And that'll give us an idea whether that thing should be crossing any of our bridges. And you may have to make an ordinance and saying, no, that particular trailer was designed for the state of Michigan. It's made in Canada. It's online. You can see it. And, but I asked the state, the state didn't load rate it, but they said they would need a permit, and they can get a yearly permit to cross their bridges. But, you know, they just pay a fee and away they go. But I, I know, it's awfully heavy. It's, it carries 12,000 gallons of milk, is what the information on the internet said. So if we can get, if we can get construction money, we can move that 2030 or 2031 up considerably. All right, we still have to get permits and everything for the bridge, and that's going to take a little time, and plus the design. But we can move that up, what, two, three years probably? Yeah.
What was the total, what was the total cost? Two and a half?
2.4 million with everything, design and construction, right away, and inspection.
So what would best case scenario be then if the state approves this tax levy change and we find out in December that there is going to be local funding for the project? What would be the best case scenario for completion?
I would think design will take, what, a year and a half, probably? Yeah, I figure a year and a half. And then we can bid it, so you're talking 27, maybe 28?
I'm sorry, I meant that if we locally fund it.
Yeah, the entire thing. We can get the design done.
Yeah.
So Joe's kind, we're kind of doing this on both ends. We're doing the additional appropriation, and hopefully we get the money from the additional 1.7 million, which, and I'm sure it'll be in the paper, the tax rate went up for this. So we're kind of hedging bets on both ends because I can't say the council's going to do an additional appropriation because I'm only one of seven. So we're going on that end for additional appropriation for engineering with the 1.7. But we also don't want to wait and not do, apply for the federal aid bridge or project because we don't want to lose on that if this doesn't happen. So we're kind of hedging both ends of the spectrum to try to get this, get this resolved.
If it were a small bridge, it wouldn't be that big of a deal, but it's a three span. I believe it's about 100 foot, around 100 feet long, so.
So, so we're kind of doing both because I can't say we're going to vote one way because I don't know. And we don't know if DLGF is going to approve the petition that was just sent in last week. You know, there's too many unknowns, so we're going at it at both ends, hopefully to solve this problem.
For your information also, we had to close another bridge.
Yeah, I heard that.
Yeah, Bridge 138. It's under design right now, design. But it had some, what they call, critical problems with it. Federal Highway come in and said, no, you've got to restrict one lane. Well, how do you restrict one lane? And keep, make sure you keep people. So we shut the bridge down, and they've got to do some work underneath the bridge on the foundation. And then they've got a guardrail post that needs replaced. I've already contacted the contractor. He's looked at it. He's scheduling, so we have to have it done within 30 days. It has to be done about, right around by, maybe about November 10th. We got to get moving on it. It's not a real big, I don't want to spend a lot of money on fix when we know we're going to replace it in the future, so. So we're trying to keep it cost effective.
And I just, so because Steve cleared something up for me, and I just wanted, in case, you guys probably already know this, but Steve said that the federal government appropriates that money six years out. We make, the application may be processed quickly. Is that correct? But the money doesn't get appropriated out for six years? Is that correct? Did I understand that right?
It'll take a few months to get the contracts underway. There's a whole bunch of steps you got to go through.
Is it confusing just to say it's six years, it's six years out?
Yeah, so I mean, we can get the money within probably six months for the design if we go that way. But for the construction, you know, you're still.
Six years, yeah, so. Federal government doesn't work like local, where we just say, here, you have it tomorrow.
Is there any kind of monitoring that could be done on the bridge to make it easier to open with restrictions back to, back to 400 South? We've talked about cameras to watch people, or is there anything practical that could be done?
It'll be, I, with that crack, I believe it's going to be inspected year now. Every year we will have engineers out there looking in, okay? In the meantime, I, it only takes an overloaded vehicle to come over it and break it down to a point where it could fail, and I'm just a little leery. I, when I was in another county, before I got to that county, they had a steel trucks that went down. And it was actually 600 North in Hancock County. Semi went across it overloaded, or well, it had a weight limit. Broke it down, and the people behind it, and the vehicle went down with the bridge. So, you know, it's, it's a chance I'm not sure I would want to take.
That's my biggest concern with us opening it back up because unless you're going to have law enforcement sitting there 24 hours a day, seven days a week, how are you going to restrict somebody from going across it? It might be slightly overloaded. There you go, so it's. And if you put cameras up, you won't notice until after the fact because nobody's going to be there to stop anybody. So these are the concerns I have. I know that doesn't make Ron feel any better, but it's one of those things that we're trying to get it as quickly as possible. And if we do it locally, at least we speed it up a few years anyway, so.
I have one more question for you. So with an extra 1.7 million a year, start to work, say, in 10 years from now with that additional funding, would we start to catch up, or would we still be?
A little, I, you know, every year you wait, those bridges deteriorate more and more.
Right.
Joe knows that.
If there's 9.8, almost $10 million in bridge repair that needs to be done without inspection, but they're coming up in 2021.
Yeah.
So while it helps, yes.
Yeah.
Every little bit helps.
In 10 years, would we be equally behind or still or more behind?
I think I.
The question of the hour.
I think of my long-range plan, I think I have 10 or 12 million, I think. Or, or 31. And so it'll help. Will it catch up? No, it will not catch up.
Thank you, Joe. Anything else from the public? Anything else from the public?
Hard note to end on. Hard note to end on, depressing. Yes. I don't have anything else.
Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We are adjourned. Thanks everyone for coming.